We now reconvene on January 19, 2016, Wycomico County Council. We're in an open work session. First item on the agenda is with the Wycomico County Board of Education. How's everybody? Good afternoon. We're on time, you see. If you'd like to come up, feel free. Oh, sure. Yeah, here, I'll take it. Appreciate you bringing in an agenda here. That's helpful. And we'll go by your agenda. And then if there's any additional items that the council wants to discuss, we can certainly bring those up once we get through here. Okay?
Thank you. So thanks for the opportunity to visit with us today. It's a little bit crisp outside, but it's very comfortable and warm in here. The, we're delighted to be able to spend a few minutes with you. And at any time, if you have a question, or clarification, or a point that may conflict with it, or some supportive activity, we'd certainly like to hear about it as we go through the presentation, as opposed to, you know, really think down the side and start. And we want to start first with the discussion of the West Salisbury Elementary schematics. And we've, Liz Lashby, our Facilities Planning and Construction Director, did I get that right?
Yep.
Of, of, of the last 19 days.
So when did you come back?
Uh, I think my start date was December 1st.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
You're on.
All right. So over here is the presentation that we have shown, well, first thing we introduce, Matt Offney, he's our new facilities manager.
Matt?
Matt may jump in as we go through. If that's something you guys wanted to talk about.
What I suggest, Matt, what I'll suggest is that you go to the podium and speak at the microphone. If it's going to be extended, you certainly join us at the table, but it would be your option. Just if you have a mic.
Is that better? Okay. All right. Some of you have, I believe, already seen this presentation. We've given it to the School Building Commission, as well as the Board, and both have approved for submission to the state, which we executed last week. So just to give you a brief coordination update, we've been fast-tracking it while trying to stay transparent. Here's a summary of a lot of the meetings that have taken place over the course. Matt started before my tenure in November, and he was basically, Mr. Frey passed the ball, and he went running with it. We've made a lot of progress in a short amount of time. We're happy that the submission has been made to the state. As you may be aware, we are, per the High Performance Building Standards of the state, pursuing LEED Silver Certification for this building. And just to bring you up to speed, January 5th was the School Building Commission schematic presentation, and on the 12th, it was reviewed and approved by the Board. Here's a schedule. We just want to point out, we're trying to condense design, as well as fast-track construction, so that we can maintain a school year 18, 19 start, so that the building would be ready to be occupied in August of 2018. So we just want to highlight that, for those that are in the architectural and engineering industry, can appreciate that. That's basically cutting it almost in half for that timeframe. So we're working very diligently towards an April 1st Design Development submission to the state to keep everything on track. It's on the existing site. It's approximately 18 acres. Over on the right, you can see its relationship to Salisbury Middle School in the same neighborhood. The building is a little over 57,000 square feet, with some mechanical mezzanines. Its state rate of capacity is projected to be at 358 students. The building design capacity local is 350. And the projected enrollment for year seven is currently at 342. And this will be revisited this spring with our next round of projected enrollments. As you're probably already aware, it is a pre-K to second grade school. There's approximately 16 grade-level classrooms. There'll be a separate gymnasium and cafeteria, which is something that they don't currently have, as well as a media center. It's a Title I school. They also have dedicated special education and resource rooms. There is a community partnership relationship with the food bank. It'll also have art and music classrooms. So here's a, a frame of reference for the site. To the north is, is it Fenice Drive? On the other side is West Road. The building sits fairly closely to where the existing building is located right now. So that's the basic footprint. Oh, I do want to go back and point out one, one thing for clarification. Although there's a dashed area there to the north of an addition, no, no utilities are being put in place right now, that would have to be a completely separate, independent addition HVAC-wise, as well as utility. So basically, all the infrastructure is only for the size building that is currently being designed for today. Here's an overall floor plan, which is color-coded. The green is roughly the classrooms. That purplish-blue color is the cafeteria and associated kitchen and support spaces. Below that is the gymnasium with a performance platform. Let me blow this area up. So to the left there is the main entrance off of the front parking lot area. Everything that you see in that pinkish-red color is administration. Below that is the media center, or the reading room. You have the, again, the cafeteria and the gymnasium, and then back of the house, mechanical spaces in the gray. And then this is predominantly the classroom wing. And I do want to point out, if you had seen any earlier renditions of this, although this has been moving quickly, we've worked really, really hard to condense the floor plan and create a design that is as efficient as possible. And with those efforts, we've been able to keep it within the program square footage that was established as part of the fiscal year 2017 revised capital improvement plan request. Here's just a couple shots of, of a model massing, and some buildings that are in the surrounding neighborhood. The architects have tried to, you know, make it such that, as a single-story building, it fits in within the surrounding neighborhood and is an asset to that community. Just for your reference, this is the current LEED scorecard. As mentioned previously, we're aiming for Silver, which is in the 50 to 59 range. We're currently at 44, which is definitely in the yes column. And then there's yes, maybe, no, maybe. But within those yes, maybe ranges, we're fairly confident that we'll be able to make it into that Silver range. And this is still very preliminary, where it's just in schematic design.
And, and the significance of that?
Of the LEED certification?
Of getting to that, yes.
Um, it's required by the state as part of the High Performance Building Standards.
What's necessary to go from where you are now to get to?
Well, basically, the, there's twen-, uh, so it would be 44 credits that are within that maybe range. The yes, maybe are, are ones that are probably more likely to shift into the yes column than necessarily the no-maybes. But still, the 40, 44 plus that 23 will more than put us in, in Silver range. Even on Bennett Middle School, I believe, I wasn't here at the time, but we were able to achieve gold. I don't know that we'll necessarily be able to do that here, because it's, it's a different, it's a different LEED. LEED changes their standards every three to four years. So this is actually a more stringent LEED version versus the previous one, just because it's the most recent.
So is cost the same as we discussed last quarterly meeting?
Um, we had put a cost comparison, sorry it's not here, uh, today, but the design team has put together a schematic design cost estimate. And when we go back and show you, when the mechanical engineers finally got into more detailed versions of what they would have to do, it's, we've got 2,300 square foot of mezzanine space that's required. Like I mentioned previously, we did a really good job of maintaining the original square footage as proposed in the revised CIP request. Now, when the contractor put together a, a budget estimate for the consultants, it came in, I think it was 400, a little over $400,000 in the, in the red, so to speak. What we're, what we're doing now is talking, in fact, we have a design team meeting this later today, talking about how we can address that difference within maybe material selections. Right now, it's a cost per square foot basis, you know, it's with some lines on paper right now. So before we go back and look at trying to carve out any additional square footage, we want to try to take that avenue first, and I'm fairly confident that we'll still be able to stay within that budget. And if not, then we'll have to go back and we'll have to look at program square footage. At this point in time, the school's done a really great job working cooperatively with us to, to keep within that square footage range we have now. So we, we, usually, the next step would be to tackle classroom space. So we're trying not to make classrooms any smaller than necessary when we move into design development. So we're keenly aware of that piece, and I think we'll be able to rectify it during the design development process.
You knew, you knew that question was coming. And understanding that one of your priorities was accounting for a possible expansion, have you allowed for anything in this architect of the design that would maybe help facilitate that without, you know, too much, you know, expense?
Because we can show right here, you recall, on the slave planet had a dashed-in area. That would be for a classroom wing addition somewhere down the road. We've purposely tried to keep some of those larger assembly spaces, such as the media center, as well as the cafeteria and the gymnasium on exterior walls.
Sure.
Such that if a future addition had to take place, we would also be able to expand those spaces, which would obviously have an input, impact for additional lunch shifts, et cetera.
Good. And there is plenty of land. From the first graphic, it was obvious there's plenty of land there to make that expansion. Okay. Did you want to add anything?
Got it all.
All right. Good. Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Would you be able to send that to us?
This presentation?
Yeah. Yeah. Just email it to us. We're up to date now with tablets and things. We're trying to get into, you know, the 21st century, and we can actually, we can actually follow your PowerPoint on tablet if you all want to send it to us ahead of time in the future.
Oh, sure.
That'd be great.
We should have come with our surfaces.
That's good. You have on here also, I guess, the, any questions from, any council members on this? Okay. The IAC Unified Support.
We're, we're very interested in making sure that the state, and Board of Public Works, and Governor, and the Comptroller, and Treasurer understand that we're together, County Council, County Executive, Board of Education, everybody, for this project, because there's a lot of competition for those dollars. So I think we need to encourage you folks to participate, even if you just wa-, just show up and stand there would be great. They like to, they like to see that. We're also going to work to see if our legislators can participate, again, just to, to visit, just to, to show us support, because it's a, it's a major project for us. It's important for our kids as a, in the schools. It's also an important jobs project, because there's been a lot of news lately in regards to the economy, the recession affecting Wycomico County harder possibly, and longer possibly than, than many of, of the other areas of the state. So the more we can do to be together for this, I think the better the chances are for us to get the funding from the state, and to keep this rolling and to get, get back online.
What time is, is that going to be on the 27th?
Going to look up.
Just let us know.
Yep.
Because we'll be, we'll be there, at least.
We haven't gotten our individual testimony slot yet, but it's usually mid-morning, mid-afternoon.
There are, there are a couple of us who will be there, John, I believe, on the 27th.
Most of them. Are these hearing times that you're going to have, will they be posted on your website?
Probably not, because it's, it's, I think it's limited in terms of who all can come in.
It would probably be prudent then if you advised us of what your hearing times were, and if we were available, then we'd love to attend.
We'll make sure, we'll get you a text or an email or.
Because we have, we have Mako that day, so we'll be there. And from what I understand, we also have testimony on the elected, elected-appointed school board referendum as well, though I don't have a time on that yet, but that's the 27th as well?
It's at 1:00.
At 1:00? Okay.
Or later.
Okay, so whatever you do, make sure that your testimony revolves around that 1:00 time.
Catch cover. Right, stay away from that.
You let them know.
Their priorities.
Good, but I agree. I agree. And we'd be, we'd be glad to be there.
Great, thanks. 2017 fiscal year budgeting. Thanks, Liz.
Hello, Bruce, how are you? It's that time of year again. FY17 budget preparation has begun. This morning was our first meeting with the Board of Education in a work session to kick off the FY17 budget process. And I'm here to invite the council members and the community to our first public hearing this Thursday at 101 Long Avenue at 5:30 in the board auditorium for the first budget hearing for the FY17 budget. So we're, we're in full swing in budget meetings, and our next scheduled work session with the, with the board is the 26th, Tuesday, the 26th, at 7:30 a.m., boardwork session. So anyway, we wanted to bring the council up to speed on, on the process. The next item we would like to talk about is something that we've talked about before with the council, and the council asked us to consider bringing this back at a later, later date. And that's what we'd like to do today, and that is the School Construction Savings Plan. I have brought copies for the council of documents that we've shared before, and also the. As the council may remember, the School Construction Savings Fund was established back in June of 2007 as a result of a resolution by the county council. And during the period from 2007 to, through June 30th of 2013, when the School Construction Savings Fund was in place, there was $11,381,000 that were set aside in the School Construction Savings Fund. And we have attached a spreadsheet for the council to see in detail exactly how those funds were expended and upon which, which projects. And we've tried to give you a detail of exactly how important those funds were to being able to take care of various small to medium-sized projects through that period of time, FY11, through what we've projected for the current fiscal year, FY16. You'll see that the total amount that we are projecting to have been expended through that period of time will have been $10,459,380, $390 of the total $11,381,000, leaving a balance available of $922,000. And we put at the bottom there, projects that we know, that we have on the docket that need to be done, and for which currently no funds are available relative to addressing some of these needs. So we wanted to, again, to bring to the council how important we felt the School Construction Savings Fund has been to the board's ability to address much-needed deferred projects over the years. They have been funds that have been used for capital projects that are either in, per the requirement of the, the Savings Fund, either in our CIP or in our capital outlay budget. And again, looking at all of the three pages there of advantages of the School Construction Savings Plan, we would like to ask the council, once again, to please consider establishing the School Construction Savings Fund. And we stand to answer any questions that the council may have at any time relative to this important issue.
In the, in the breakdown, so you should take the first column, actual fiscal year, January 11. Are these amounts that have been budgeted towards different projects that then were not, that were left over?
These are actual dollars spent. So for example, in, in the column FY10, 11, for the Northwestern Elementary Mechanical Plant, we spent $197,446.53 out of the School Construction Savings Fund for that particular project. And likewise with each project listed here.
So in the first column, it was two and a half million dollars that was spent out of the School Construction Savings Fund?
That's correct. It's exactly correct. And each succeeding year, those accumulated amounts, for a total spent of $10,459,389. Notice in 16, these are the projects, starting with that very first one of 10230, we've set aside $10230 to be spent during this fiscal year on the Beaver Run Sewer Septic and Drain Field Project that's going on.
I guess what I was interested in seeing was how the accumulation of $11,381,000 came about.
Sure. I can.
If you don't have the answer now, just if you can get that.
Oh, yeah. I, I've got a copy of it, and I'll, I'll share this with you, and you can get copies, but it'll show each year how we accumulate those amounts of money. I'm sorry I didn't.
That's okay.
Didn't bring that, extra copies, wouldn't. But over that period of time, you'll see in that spreadsheet how we added to the School Construction Savings Fund as a result of the general fund operating budget. Through sound financial trans-, uh, management, we were able to save monies in our budget appropriations and move it into the School Construction Savings Account.
And the idea of the, for, for those that are new, of the idea of the School Construction Savings Plan, you're probably going to be able to explain it better than I am, but my, my take of it is, is that if there was any items that were budgeted, and at the end of the year, you had a surplus, that money, instead of being spent, would be transferred to the school savings construction.
That's exactly correct. And we could use that only for either projects that were in the approved CIP that didn't get funded, for whatever reason, or in the CIP capital outlay project that didn't get funded.
That's a really important point, is that there are already projects that you all have seen and know about, but, but possibly couldn't fund.
When you say couldn't fund, I'm, I'm a little confused there.
In other words, we'd asked for it, just for example, we've asked for a list of 20 priorities in 16.
$100,000 to fix a roof, let's say.
Right.
And you're saying that the project just never was done?
Never was funded. That's right.
When you say funded, it was funded, but.
No, wasn't. Wasn't funded.
We asked for it to get funded in our request.
In other words, we at, we've, we've asked for maybe $25 million from the county council in our CIP.
Right.
And you're only able to fund so much money through your bond funds.
Right.
So those, the projects that aren't funded sit and are deferred.
Right.
To a future date.
Right.
So those projects, we're able now to do with some of this School Construction Savings Fund money.
Right. Well, again, you're talking about the, the projects where you are spending the money.
Right.
I was sort of trying to get at with this sheet here.
Right.
How it develops into.
From the general, from the general fund.
The building of the fund, yes.
We're appropriated X number of dollars in our general fund operating budget by 15 categories.
Right.
And through the year, just like with the county, when you have your budget, you appropriate money for various categories. And then at the end of the year, you have monies left over in your various categories, just like we have had money left over through ba-, basically saving money in this line item or that line item. And over the years, that sheet shows each year how much we added, in that top section there, each one of the years, since '07, how much we added to the School Construction Savings Fund.
So, so if there's no School Construction Savings Fund, and this money's left over, where does it go?
It goes to the startup of the next year's general fund operating budget.
Year out.
Yep. Year out.
So what's left over, so six and one half dozen of the other, I guess, with the fund one way, you, you just, we let you keep the money?
Yeah. Right. The, the difference is that by moving it to the School Construction Savings Fund, it is earmarked specifically for deferred projects. In other words, projects that hadn't got funded through the CIP process. And so we're able to address those very important needs in our facilities.
Are these, these aren't the list of monies that you had left over then?
That's all that was left over, because we, we have to.
This is the money that you had, are these, are these the monies you had left over from projects, or are these the?
No, this is from the general fund, left over from the general fund. Because we're not allowed to carry over anything. It goes, any, any dollar carried over goes into the general fund operating budget. So since FY13, as you can see, there's been no money added to the School Construction Savings Fund, because it was ceased and desisted. And so all carryover funds have been going to the subsequent years' general fund operating budget.
So I'd say that you were able to use this money to leverage $5 million from the IAC.
Yes.
Is that, is that one sum?
No, various projects over time. Yep.
They'll match you dollars.
Yes. Yep. So for example, if, if the council wasn't able to fund, because you have limited resources, you weren't able to fund a particular request for a roof, for example, they will match a dollar for amount that we're able to contribute toward a project. So that's how we were able to leverage state aid.
Only on certain projects?
Only on certain projects. Yep.
But honestly, it's a win for everybody, because there are projects that really need to be done, that you can't, you can't fund, and we're able to really focus that money on things that we need done again and again.
And if that money went back into just your budget for next year, as it's still currently, that money can't be used for any of these type of projects.
Only, only if the board and the council would appropriate it for such purposes.
Correct.
And again, the, the different, the other big constraint there is, once you put it in the general fund, you're limited to a 12-month period. When it's moved to School Construction Savings Fund, we're not limited to that 12-month period.
That was, that, that was cut out for our administration. Wayne, could you bring us up to date on why that was done?
I wasn't, I don't believe I was here when it was done.
What was your recollection of why that was done?
If the council, if the council. It was done because.
Okay. I find the right person to ask the question. We haven't looked around long enough.
It was done purely and simply because the money was appropriated by the county council on the recommendation of the county executive for school operating expenses.
Uh-huh.
And at the end of the year, as Mr. Ford has said, there is some money that doesn't get spent. That money then goes forward to help pay for the current operating expenses of the next school week budget.
Right.
Same way with ours. If money doesn't roll forward to help fund the next school year's operating expenses, that doesn't mean that the next year year's operating expenses are lower. It means that that money has to be backfilled from somewhere else.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, going off Mr. Kramer's explanation, so right, so right now, it goes into the operating fund for the next year. And, you know, it's getting to be budget time. And, you know, it's getting to be budget time and we, you know, often hear from the Board of Education that, you know, you want more money above the maintenance of effort, for instance, because there's a variety of unmet needs. So, if this money is taken away from the operating budget, is that going to increase the number of unmet needs that the general fund can meet? I mean, is it, you know, it would, it would help out with construction needs, but would it then take away money from the needs met by operating expenses in the general fund?
No, I don't, I don't say, I don't think it's going to do that. What we see it as is a tool to encourage our managers to be prudent with the dollars that they spend during the year. Because in most of the cases, they try to always hold back a little bit of money just to make sure something comes up in April, March, maybe. And this way, we can say, listen, you can hold it right, right up until the very end. And if you don't need it, I don't want you going out and buying something in April that you're not even going to use until next year. I want everything to be fresh for the users bought there for. And they can then put it into this fund that the capital can then be improved. And they know well that they're going to get their, those dollars and then come back possibly to help them get the roof that they need in their building or some other type of capital expense.
Well, you know, because, you know, let's say in two thousand and twelve, it was about three million dollars that went to the, you know, the fund, the building fund. You know, that, if that wouldn't exist, it'd be three million dollars for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. And so, you know, to be frank, I'm not sure that this council is going to ever go above maintenance of effort. Let's say maybe that won't happen. I mean, so will this then mean that, you know, that that would be a hole in the general fund then that, you know, is being filled by this extra money every year? I mean, you, then be able to use for construction? I mean, but is that, that's not an issue you don't see in terms of budgeting?
Oh, I, I'm not the...
Well, again, the, what the board attempts to do, because fund balance is a one-time fund, we're not guaranteed, because as you can see, the amounts change. So, you, you don't want to utilize year-end fund balance to fund an ongoing expense. So, that's the danger with trying to use fund balance to try to fund operating, because you don't know whether that fund balance is going to be there. So, that's the thing we have to be cautioned about. And so, that's why this money moved to a School Construction Savings Fund, spent on one-time-only projects makes more sense.
Bruce, if I could interject one other piece, because it's actually more than a dollar...
If you need some mic, great, thanks.
It's more than a dollar-to-dollar leveraging, Mr. Holloway, what you were referring to earlier. In some cases, if it's a state eligible project, you're actually leveraging a dollar to ninety-seven dollars on the cost-share formula, depending on what the eligible construction costs are for that piece. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
But that would stay in proof for any cost-share project? Yeah. I mean, not just because it was in the school building or savings fund, it would work.
As long as we had the money available.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate you getting all this to us, because it's what we need to evaluate.
So, I guess at some point, we need to know, how can we bring this back forward to you so that, I mean, or you'll just let us know what kind of discussion? Because it really is important. That's why we keep bringing it back.
Yeah, I understand too. And we would certainly have another work session on it before we decided to go any further, whether it be a separate work session or whether we include it in the next quarterly. We'd probably do it before the next quarterly, if we're going honestly.
We'd be glad to get whatever information you need.
Great, thanks. The next item on the agenda, of course, that you've supplied is the land acquisition near James M. Bennett on the Business Street. That created a bit of a stir, I'll tell you right now, among, you know, among a lot of people.
My apologies. It was a good move, a good idea, but as we did the analysis, we did in-depth analysis on it. We said not to go forward with it.
Oh, you did?
Yes. So, it's not going forward.
It's not, it's not a clear D. That's why we thought to pull it well. There was a question with a twenty-foot driveway, for better word?
Right.
Right away?
Alley.
Alley. That really, we didn't, about a new building.
Yeah. A lot, you know, people had concerns with the fact that, you know, the money had been budgeted for that particular parcel and development of it. And then it seemed like, sort of came out of nowhere, then the next thing we knew, we were expanding the property with, you know, with those funds and weren't quite sure whether or not it's appropriate.
I'll let Bruce talk to it. The funds can only be used from Bennetts, to buy, be used at Bennetts, my understanding.
For land acquisitions.
For land acquisitions.
Right.
So, you know, it's, that wasn't my call. But anyhow, we saw that, after talking to our lawyer and everything, the best thing was to say no, but thank you.
So, if those funds were available for that purchase, what, what is happening now with those monies?
They will just sit. So, in many, in many respects, it would have made it a better parcel for future planning, whether we do some type of educational development on it, or if we turn it back to the county to use it for economic development, or we do some type of space for softball fields and, you know, this tournament development that's really an economic engine for our community, or to deal with SU. But, you know, it's, it's, it's an area I think that we may want to look at in the future. Say, is there a way to either rephrase bond funding so that the bond says something that gives a little bit more flexibility? Or to have a reinterpretation of what, you know, how we manage those, those categories or those silos of funding?
Yep.
And that's, that's a longer discussion that would also involve the council's attorney as well as our attorney. Probably, you know, bringing a bond specialist to make sure it's done.
Any questions? The proficiency scores.
We recently received back the first round of PART tests and we will give you copies of some graphics on it. Basically, the school system worked out relatively well compared to our indexes of student conditions. Overall, the, you know, the state numbers and most of the other school districts or counties have significantly different situations in terms of free and reduced meals and mobility rates and homelessness. We're one of the tops in the state in terms of homeless ratings. So, those, any of those kinds of factors drive down scores. But we had some bright spots and we're working forward right now is to analyze the various key component portions. In other words, reading is a, is a pretty broad spectrum kind of an issue, English language arts. What we really want to find out is, where do the kids have difficulties? Was it in being able to construct a sentence? Was it being able to understand, you know, the main facts or the gist of a short story that they read? And also, we want to find out how we can drive their, their performance on computers, because everything is going to be on computers. And we have to, we have to make sure our kids have that opportunity. And while we're, you know, cautiously inching towards some type of a situation where each child has a digital device for the appropriate portions of the day, right now, we're still, you know, sharing cards and stuff around. We've got about one computer for every two kids. So, we're, we're getting to where we need to go, but it's a, it's a slog. And we have about eighty-five percent of buildings are covered with Wi-Fi access. And we want to have a hundred percent so that a child can stay in their own normal room, their own room that they're used to, and do their testing. But that's going to be a few years down the pike as, as we move forward on it. But this is our first round. This is the baseline here. And, and it's a tool for us to use. And we are advocating that the tests be shorter, fewer of them, more remains to see how that all shake out.
Well, we did talk to some teachers who had some concerns about the amount of county-specific tests that are being done. And I'm not opposed to testing. I'm opposed to ineffective testing. And some of the concerns they were raised that these tests may be counterproductive, may not even be effective, that... So, I mean, how do we know that all that Wycomco County is doing in terms of testing is helping out our scores? Because, you know, scores ain't great.
Well, I think the, the key piece to it, what are the tests used for? Our benchmark assessments are used to determine, are the kids making appropriate progress to the summative test from the state? And we have strong correlations with those tests as far as, if we say the kid is getting eighty percent or ninety percent, whatever the number is, at, say, January, February, March, we have very strong correlations with what actually occurs in April, which is what we, that's the reason we take the test, is to be able to monitor and adjust the curriculum and the instruction. We would, we would like to spend more time in terms of analyzing the tests. We are doing that with teacher groups and with our advisory groups to make that happen. We are not doing more tests than absolutely necessary.
I mean, how you doing? What do, what do the other jurisdictions do in terms of county-specific tests?
We're right in the, we're right about in the middle as far as comparison with counties. The only thing that's really off on ours is that at second grade, we give all of our students the, it's not Gates, it's Magenta. Interview test for magnet qualification. And that's, some counties don't do that. There are a lot of counties that don't have what we refer to as our magnet program. But we've taken the position that every child deserves a right to be considered for the magnet program, not just the kids that are getting As, Bs, and Cs, or whatever the score might be. And that interview test takes a bit of a time, and so it skews our second graders. But even our second graders are within the range of average for, for the state as far as minutes spent on testing, test prep. Thank you for the questions. Good question.
There has been, and I've heard the same thing, that it just seems like the teachers are inundated with tests. And it's, they'd rather teach. They'd rather teach the subject matter as opposed to, you know, targeting individuals towards the test. And, you know, you all are the ones who exchange, you know, ideas and, and goals with the, with the teachers, I guess, on a regular basis. It's a little difficult for us to get in the middle of it. We're a little bit further away. But all we can do is express to you the concerns that we've heard in reference to that and just hope that, you know, that there's open ears and exchange of information.
John, we've heard the same thing.
Right.
So, you know, you know, I have a daughter in the system.
Right.
I hear it.
Teachers.
You know, so, you know, I hear it from others. So, we're, it's not on deaf ears.
Good, good. Yeah, this is, these, these scores, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to say. Got the best minds working on it, I guess, I just don't kind of... Do you have any idea of how you approach it from here?
Well, we're going to do a number of different things. First, you know, we've been, we always have a group going on saying, okay, what are the tests that we give? Whether it's, you know, benchmark achievements tests or the others. And how many minutes are we spending on that? Can we whittle it down as a way to tweak it? We talk about the state level as well as locally. And I meet regularly with the Teachers Association, with their officers, as well as with teachers that are just nominated from the buildings, to talk about this as well as a lot of other things. But we also want to make sure that we get the right information so that we assure county, the community, the state, and the federal government that we are doing the right thing by our kids. And I think we are. I mean, I'd rather not, I mean, you know, operationally, would I rather have an audit or just simply run the schools? I'd rather just operate the school. But we also have to have audits to assure other people that they're doing the right thing. And teachers actually do use the test results. Now, the PART test, we have, you know, this is last year's test. We're just now getting some, some overall information. It's going to be a while before we actually get the detailed information so that the teacher knows, you know, if it's sentence construction, here's what I've got to do. And they're not going to get that information for a while. Now, this, this year's test, they'll get the information faster as the system is built up. And also, it's comparative, because now you've got a baseline year plus a second year. So, we do make those adjustments. We do sit and talk. Sometimes there's, there's going to be a difference in terms of, is this one absolutely critical or is that one absolutely critical? At the end of the day, we have to make a decision.
I assume, I assume you're measuring on a continuous basis on progress and making changes as, if the progress does not meet the goals that you have set?
Yep. Yeah, we, we did that in fact. On this year's tests are going to be one day less of testing. Now...
Are there other goals besides the tests, though, John? Or measurable goals?
The number one, the number one measurable goal is how many kids graduate college and career-ready.
Right.
And everything is building towards that. And right now, what we're doing is analyzing what are the measures that we take and determine as college and career-ready? I'll give you an example. College-ready, if the kid takes a college class and passes it, that kid was college-ready. But there are other ways to measure that, such as if this kid is in CTE, Career and Technology Education, they're taking automotive, and they pass enough of the components, I think there are twenty-one or twenty-seven components in automotive education. Are they passing enough that they can get a job at a, I'm not sure how to say this, but a reputable, in other words, at the dealership? Maybe is the best way to say that. Is that kid qualified? And so, we're setting criteria for that. And we go through that, because that's, that's what our goal is. Are they college and career-ready? These tests are strictly aligned to make sure you make adequate progress every year towards that goal. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also came across the state's policy grid, MSA scores for two thousand and fourteen, which was, it was part of a broader seminar. And of course, Wycomco is very low in that as well.
We're the second or third poorest school system in the state with the first or second highest homeless rate. I mean, that's, those are the things that in my business drive test score. You know, if, if a child is moving every ninety days or seventy days, the kid is probably less focused on, on how to do algebra as they are to just try to figure out, you know, what can they fit in their backpack, because that's all they're going to be transporting.
John, we've got over eight thousand students that are free and reduced meals. That's got over sixty percent.
Those families need jobs.
Is there, is there a separate strategy developed to address that, Bruce?
I'm sure that they look at it. I mean, they really do co-in on that issue.
We put extra resources, extra staff, extra reading interventionists, math interventionists in the schools, either through Title One funding, which is, Title One funding goes to the school based on the free and reduced meal count in that building. And it's not actually a count, it's a concentration. If you have, you could have five hundred students in your school that have free and reduced meals. But if there are fifteen hundred students in that school, probably not going to affect it a lot because they're a minority. But if you've got six hundred kids in that school and five hundred of them are on free and reduced meals, say, two hundred and fifty or three hundred of them are moving every ninety days, you've got a whole new aspect to do it. And you've got to provide accessibility for those kids. That's why you see these silver vans driving around with our name on them, and LG plates. We're dealing with kids that are homeless, or we call them FIT, Families in Transition, to try and keep them in the same school, to try and keep at least something consistent in their lives. And it's paying off. Those kids are getting more of them graduating. That's, that's a critical piece. Good question. Thank you.
Transportation students update?
I just wanted to share a little bit on that.
Sure.
It's a time of year now that we are, we begin to have our contractors let us know if they're going to, especially for fifteen years, if they are going to renew their contracts. We give them the option, anywhere from twelve to fifteen years, to tell us if they want to buy a new bus or not. And so, we, the board determines yes or no, whether we will do the, per legal allotment for those over time. And so, that process continues through the spring. And as you know, we've had the conversation that, you know, it, it's, it keeps going toward, some of our contractors cannot, they're older. It seems it's an older population and they're not renewing their contracts. And so, we continue to try to find creative ways to transport our special needs students who have special transport, just our transportation and also our FIT. So, we have purchased a van now that has a, has a lift on it because it's a whole lot more cost-effective to send a van to pick up a student, say, from Delmar and transport them to Pittsville or Weathers than it is to send a bus to transport one child. So, we are really looking for creative and more efficient ways to do our busing. The other piece of this is, we have developed a... Um, the other piece of this is, we have developed a Bussing Efficiency Committee, which has really been valuable. We have been looking at all of our start and to- stop times for our schools. As you know, last year, we changed the Bennett Middle School. All of our middle schools started at seven forty-five, but because we would've had to buy four more buses to, um, do the Bennett Middle School to start at that time, we ended up moving their time, start time, to eight fifteen. And we have been able to use our current resources to be able to transport those kids without having to buy those buses. Of course, we've had an influx of students, um, as well, so, you know, there's lots of moving pieces in the transportation. But we, besides, uh, the Bussing Efficiency Committee, we're also developing a projected five-year plan. You know, which of the, and, and it, it floats. Um, whichever contract, just do we anticipate buying a new bus? Which ones do we anticipate not buying a new bus? Which ones, uh, that are at the fifteen years? Um, and using our enrollment projections and our projected contractors who will renew, we're putting together a plan so that over the next five years, we can see what does it look like our needs are gonna be as far as transportation. And it really is a very fluid, uh, process, but in having those, um, discussions from all the different departments on what are we doing, how are we most efficiently transporting our kids? I think we're, we're beginning to, uh, make it a little, uh, more, although we've been pretty efficient up to this point, but make it even more efficient and look at how we're transporting. So, um, Desmond is, is a great leader in that, because he, uh, he comes with all the data, and we drill down on the data, and we look at, you know, where are these kids living? How can we be better, uh, better serve our students and families and be most efficient? So, I'll keep you updated on that, but this is the time of year we begin to, um, have the contractors respond to us, whether they're going to buy a new bus or give up their contract.
Were you losing any contractors this year?
Um, Desmond seemed to think there was two, two that were probably going to give up their contracts.
Multiple, multiple contracts, or just single contract?
Um, I believe one of them had two, and one was one, but, but I'll, I'll check on that. So, um, and they're the, just the ones he knows about. So, um, they'll have a certain date, I think it's, uh, it may be March first that they have to let us know by. And then all of those routes that are available go out to, uh, contractors to see if any of them want them. If they don't, then we have to figure out a way to serve that, and whether it's, um, buying a bus, or, um, or moving routes around, or whatever it is. We, again, we're trying to do the most efficient process that we can. But I'll keep you updated on that, 'cause it, it is a, it's a pretty intense process for Desmond in this spring.
It is.
But the vans have been such a godsend.
Right.
You know, used to, we had to send a whole bus, you know, a large bus. And so, uh, getting that waiver from the state to be able to use the vans has been, um, significantly, uh, cost-effective for us.
Sure.
So, that, that really helps.
Yeah. I'm down. The branding for the county?
We are delighted that the city is taking the lead on some kind of a branding project. They're just getting this cranked up next week.
Right.
And I'm looking forward, uh, greatly to working with it, uh, with the school system. And I'm looking forward to the possibilities of linking arm in arm with the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think the branding thing will be kind of an overall thematic thing, but I think it would really be great to s- have below that, uh, something that says, we are a county, and here's some things we can do, and that are, it makes us special compared to any other county in the state of Maryland, or for that matter, on Eastern Seaboard. And I'd like the opportunity to be able to have some meetings after the city gets theirs going subsequently to, to say, okay, what are the things that we as a county? Because a county is a different experience than is a city. And in Maryland, counties are far more important than they are in most states. And I'd like to, to emphasize that and look at the things that we do as a county and really build on those post, because I think we have some great stuff going on. And we've got some special things that are features of our, our county that I think we can brand. I don't know what the brand is. I mean, I don't have a word for it.
Right.
And I know that if we sit down together, we can come up with one.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you put it on the agenda, because you're right. I mean, you and I have attended more than one meeting where that, that is a high priority.
Yep.
Everybody knows that however Wycomico County decides to brand itself, the, one of the key elements is to people who wanna come here, or companies that wanna come here, is the educational system.
Yep.
And it is important that we make sure that we include that, I think, as, as a positive in, in coming to Wycomico County. You and I have talked before that the state of Delaware, actually, their Board of Education, where their education department actually were running commercials, television commercials?
Markets.
Yes, um, and to promote just education statewide.
Yes.
And I remembered it, and it, it was quite a, quite a large campaign. And I thought it was pretty, pretty effective. And they weren't just preaching to the choir and that, it seemed to be, you know, I think, if I got the message, they were doing a good job. So, I think we, we do need to incorporate that, and I'm glad to see that you're on, you know, keeping it as far as one of your priorities.
I think it's a high priority for us as a community.
Sure.
And it's, and I think it is different. The city has a different set of, uh, a coup de grace that, uh, that they can advertise, but we have a county, and we have, we just had a lot of phenomenal things, I think, that figure out, you know, how to really market it.
Right. Exactly.
Do you have somebody designated to help you with that, John?
Not yet.
You?
I, no, I think, I think it's we, sit down and figure, figure out who, and, 'cause...
Yeah, we would incorporate, I think we would incorporate the Board of Education and their goals with our proj-...
We did a little project like this about, um, gosh, I would say maybe three years ago. Kinda got started, but we never really, you know, carried it to full fruition. We had a website, and we had, had an avatar, and a whole bunch of other stuff like that. But I think the, uh, the folks that were working with that, I don't know, I think they got busy with something else or something. But I like, I think it's, I think it's important for us as a community. Otherwise, we're gonna miss out on this stuff.
Yeah, very good, very good. Um, and of course you have collaboration ideas with the county?
I'm still, still thinking, what are, are there ways for us to go, work together, whether it's buying paper, or buying fuel oil, or buying whatever the product is? We see good response as far as the effectiveness of saving dollars with our insurance program.
Right.
I think that really works out well, and there's some other opportunities like that. And, uh, anytime you're interested in sitting down and having, you know, us sit down, put our heads together and say, oh, there are two more, or three more, or five more things we could do, I'd be delighted. 'Cause I believe we can save a few bucks, and those are directly going back to the task barriers.
Good. Okay.
Got any room left in your, um, office space out there behind loads? Maybe we can move some offices out there.
You know, we've, uh, part of our contract, I, I, I do too, uh, part of our contract is to, to be able to take over the rest of the building should the other vet, other renters decide to part company.
Oh, really? We have eighty-two...
You got much more room? Uh, we have eighty-two percent of the building, and they have eighteen percent. So, they have, they have an express, we've never had a conversation, that if they choose to re-...
A, a small example, uh, I don't know if we've talked about it before, but it's a very simple conversation that you and I had with the arc on welding class, which the state had their investment in, and we were trying to do, uh, you know, economic development and, and create new jobs through the welding industry. Very successful, probably one of the largest successes I've seen in, in a while. And, um, it was mentioned to me that they just, for these classrooms, for the welders, they needed chairs, they needed desks, and things of the sort. And so I said, well, let me, I'll talk to Dr. Frederson, see what he has, and it was like, what do you have? And you said, how many do you need? And it's that simple.
Some are really...
We were sharing resources.
You don't ask, you don't get.
Yeah. And I, I think, I think we've got more opportunities for it.
Right.
And I think we have to grab, we have to act fast.
And they now have, they now were able to, you know, have a successful classroom, create a successful product. Uh, the graduates, they had, um, they had jobs waiting for them. As soon as they walked out the door, they were hired.
Yep.
And it's progressing on, uh, even now, so we're gonna come back to you for more. Ha-ha.
I like it. I, I was talking with one of the people who hired some of those guys, and they were delighted.
Right.
And these are people who had not welded before.
Mm-hmm.
And they started with absolutely zero, and, uh, you got a job. And I don't think it was a bad, uh, it was a bad habit.
Ha-ha. Uh, any other, uh, comments from, um, councilmen?
Well, could we, could we talk about the discipline issue? I understand that, um, teachers have mentioned that to you, and there was some stuff in the news about that. So, um, you know, we, we heard kind of, you know, you know, from the teachers that they maybe feel there's not an emphasis upon discipline from the administration, um, you know, that there are discipline concerns in schools that are going unaddressed. So, what, what's the strategy going forward to address that?
Well, actually, we promoted, uh, Mrs. Kim Miles to be an Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, and, uh, that gives her more control and power over not only, uh, operations in the schools, but also the principals, and deans, and the vice principals and the like. Uh, we have not changed our, uh, our discipline code of conduct in terms of ourselves. The state of Maryland has determined that there are certain, uh, disciplinary actions. I try not to use the word punishments. We're, we're trying to think therapeutically. But, um, I, I, I look at them as, as a punishment, I guess, but, um, that are not worthy of being a suspension for a student. So, there have been some changes in the code of conduct as a result of that. But, um, we still are very assertively, uh, addressing discipline for students. I think we have some students that, uh, we may be seeing a little bit of a s- a spike in terms of some behaviors. But on this side of the coin, if we look at all the, the kids, we, we have added about three hundred and fifty kids to our school system this year. Now, most of them are pre, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, that area, but we've, but they've been across the whole system. And, uh, our actual disciplinary referrals and suspensions and all that, when you look at that glump of action, um, has actually the same or dropped. Uh, now, why is that? Are people not referring? I'm still, you know, I'm, I'm watching the referral rates for teachers and for buildings, and, uh, they're pretty comparable for, for most of the employees with, uh, with previous ones. Uh, I think we have some, some kids that are some bad actors, you know, that, uh, are not there for education, they're, they're for whatever reason, and, uh, they got a little bit more mouth, maybe a little bit more misbehavior than, than they need. But, um, I remember sitting in this chair eight years ago and having a conversation with, you know, the board, the councilman members at that time. And at that time, I'd made some expulsions. And at that point, I think I'd expelled more people than have expelled in the previous decade. And I, and I, I think, I know at least one of you that was, that we, we talked about this, and, uh, and I still maintain that status. If you come and, come and misbehave in our schools, you're gonna, we're gonna deal with you, and deal with you firmly and quickly.
Dr. Frederson, we've got teachers that actually tell us they don't feel safe. And I, and I, I think that's, you know, I'm sure that sometimes one teacher might feel safe, and the next one might not, in the same circumstances.
Mm-hmm.
But that, that's not a, it's not a very good working environment, and, and this is something we've heard for a long time, and it's just not your school, your school system. I mean, you hear it from, well, so at some point in time, some folks don't need to be there.
Absolutely right.
You know?
And they've been removed. But we have to do the appropriate procedures. We have to show what we have done to intervene, to, to deal with that kid wherever they are in the foot. Now, if they, if, if some kid does something vile, or, you know, that kind of expellable behavior, we, we don't have a lot of steps. They're removing the building that day, and that's it. And then we go forever.
Or do they bring them back? This is the thing I'm hearing, is, is the administration's not backing up the, the teachers and the principals on their decisions to move, to move these children, you know?
It's, it's up to the, yeah, okay, I'll take it, just piece by piece.
Talk into the mic, I can hardly hear you from here.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, if a, if a, if a student misbehaves in the class, say they're, they're using their cellphone, it's up to the teacher to do something about the student, not to say, you're down to the office, or whatever the misbehavior is. Now, if it's egregious, if the kid nails another kid, then that kid's going to the office immediately. But in most instances, it's mouthiness, stuff like that. The teacher has a responsibility to interact with him, to intervene. I think some of our teachers, um, you know, look at, look at the bulk of our teachers, they're coming in, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one-year-old females, um, they may not have had a lot of experience with, uh, children of color, or children who are living in, are living in poverty. Um, that's a, that's a different cohort, and it, it takes some training, it takes some time to, to learn how to interact and not be afraid. You got a five-two, five-four, you know, a hundred-pound female that's, that's not dealt with blacks, and, and a, and a young, uh, African-American male walks in that's six-five, plays on the football team, the basketball team. Might be the nicest kid on the block, but in the typical situation, that teacher probably doesn't have quite the cultural competence to know how to deal with, and the kid probably doesn't know how to shut his mouth. So, we've gotta deal with that. Um, I have listened to them, I have sat with them, I've, we've talked with them, I've walked through the schools. You guys know that I have lunch with the kids on a regular basis, to just walk around the school. Now, granted, when I walk into school, there, it's like, there must be an alarm or something goes off, the suits in the building, or whatever I'm referred to as. Um, but by and large, the kids are pretty much the same as they've always been. Maybe some effect on the media, I mean, what you see on primetime television today is not what you and I saw when we were, when we were in high school. I mean, the stuff that's on it, I don't know, but we're still watching it, 'cause the advertisers still buy ads on it. I think that influences the kids. When I listen to some of the music that they're listening to, um, it's pretty offensive. I mean, uh, I, I think there are certain words you don't use to, to refer to a female. I think there are certain words that you just plain don't use in normal conversation. But for some of these kids, that is the norm, and we have to help them understand that. Code switch, when you're at school, those words are not used. When you're at church, those schools are, words are not used.
Well, the teacher, the teacher's hired to teach, for the most part.
Yep.
And even one child can create a, a huge amount of disruption in the classroom. And for the teacher to try to spend time with that one child that may have an outburst, and try to psychoanalyze that child, it, it's completely disruptive for the entire class. I don't know why the, the strategy wouldn't be to direct that child to the office, which, I mean, you know, these are new, this is a new day and age, but I still think that some processes may work just as well. Why don't you send that, that individual to the cl- to the office and say, outta here, and then let the teacher continue teaching?
Uh, we, we heard the teachers last Tuesday night, uh, clear, but it was, you know, it was nothing we ever been looking at.
Right.
You know, and, and, uh, what we've been trying to do hasn't been working. You know, it's time to get outside the box.
Okay.
And we're, and we're looking at that. I don't know if I can speak, but we're looking at. Uh, I got asked yesterday, is, do I feel the schools are safe? I do. Now, are there knuckleheads in each school that's causing problems? Absolutely no different than fifty-two years ago, there was knuckleheads that went to school and makes. You know, uh, disrespect is the biggest thing that we're hearing.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know when I was in school, I said it to a teacher, what's been said to some of these teachers, you know, things would've been done differently. You know, I'm not gonna tolerate it. You're not gonna tolerate it, somebody coming up in your face and eyes and putting on you. I don't expect it, these teachers to put up with it.
No.
Uh, and I'm holding John responsible, you know, to get some changes, to, to, uh, do what we got to do, to make sure that, you know, this school system is the best it can be, and the safest it can be. You know, uh, I don't want any child afraid to go to school, and I'm hearing that. You know, I don't want any child afraid to go to school, and I'm hearing that. You know, I had a conversation with a lady out in the hallway before I came in here. I don't want that, you know? When I went to school, bullying was there. Was I scared? Yes. So it's nothing new, it's there. We're not going to tolerate it. The knuckleheads need to find out that, hey, you know, you've had your fun. Something's different's going to happen. And, you know, so I just want the public to know that we hear them, and as long as I'm setting or I'm setting, I'm going to be working on it. And when I leave here, I've got another meeting to go to and pretend to that.
Well, I mean, you speak about branding. I mean, I think that is one of the issues that plagues Wycomico County schools in terms of there's a perception that there is issues with discipline. And I think, you know, you hear that from people in the schools, but also people that choose to send their kids to the private schools around here. And I think the, I don't think it's because of the academics. I think it's because of the perception of safety issue, that you have a lot of people that use Salisbury Christian or, you know, things like that. So, I mean, you know, it's, you know.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, we're talking about branding, talking about trying to attract people to our schools. I mean, I don't know how you fix that issue, but...
I don't either, but I don't fix it. We all fix it.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, the community fixes it. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff happening. It's all about us, it's not about Don Fitzgerald. No. And if anybody's sitting here thinks they can fix it, good luck.
Come on over with John and committee.
No, it's, we all got to think, I mean, this community has got to come together, and we got to fix the issue.
And I think something that Mark has referred to in other instances that a lot of times, maybe we can look at other jurisdictions, maybe to see how they might be addressing this concern.
You know, if somebody's doing something in this country that is curing these kind of problems, I want to know about it.
Right.
We have to go visit and talk, or bring them here, whatever. Again, we got to get outside the box.
Well, I think fixing it is not impossible, it's just that we're not allowed to fix it.
Not the way you and I, or I was told not to allow it.
You know, the, between the, the government, you know.
One thing that we haven't mentioned, it starts at home.
Oh, I know.
It don't start with us.
I understand.
And so that's one of the biggest issues right now, you know? But, you know, not all the teachers, you know, I'm going to use my daughter for example. She runs a tight ship. Been doing it for eighteen years.
Who she take after?
Her mother. John, you have to tell everything, don't you? But anyhow, you know, we can get through this, but we've got to do it together.
I think that's really all the teachers are looking for. They're looking for a response, you know, to say that we're listening and we recognize it as an issue.
And, you know, the problem is, they're frustrated. And we heard that the other night, they're frustrated. And, you know, we got a lot of meetings to have, and they're going to have.
We appreciate your response. Any other items from council or from each of you? The only thing I'll ask you to, maybe we can consider the next quarter, is it was mentioned that as far as the CTE program is concerned and how the K through twelve might be adjusting to either the college or community college and the workforce coming out of school, coming out of graduation, whether or not we maybe need to look at if we wanted to expand our CTE programs. You know, in Sussex County, they have their entire, the school is completely Sussex Tech.
You've got some money, we can take care of this.
I understand that, yeah. But I'm just thinking as to maybe or not, you know, Sussex Tech is, and I don't think it's Sussex Tech anymore, but anyway, it started out as that. And that's a school, they have a lot of, they have a lot of pride, they have a football team. What they've done with that is incredible. And a gentleman who came down from Baltimore to talk to the chamber, Newt Fowler, he's trying to talk about, you know, how we can grow as a community. And one thing he constantly said was, "Make sure you understand your niche and you take advantage of that." It could be very well that we need to do that, we need to consider expanding the CTE programs. Because I've understood that even those that are leaving CTE now and are trying to advance to the next level, like maybe go directly to a car dealership or something, they're not quite there. And they need a little bit more. So it might be something that we can focus on. Even though that transition can go to Warwick to a certain degree, it might not be enough.
Most of our kids that come out of automotive, either auto body or mechanicals,
Right.
most of them go straight into jobs.
Okay.
After high school. But if there's an interest in adding a little bit more time to their instruction so they can get all of their units as opposed to, you know, eighty percent or whatever the number is, we'd be delighted.
Well, they didn't have anything so bad about the graduates. They were saying it was a great program, but they were just saying it was, they just were hoping it would be a little bit higher level when they came out. And again, it may be the thing where as we need to focus more strongly on the technical end of our students as they're going through the process.
And we're adding some things at the local buildings at ninth and tenth grade to try and make that, you know, kind of an adjustment as a result of some advisory committee meetings we had last year. But we're interested in anything in that area. And we are adding a program at CTE for teachers. It's Teachers Academy of Maryland. It's a program that the state approves to help us develop teachers locally. Because we're having a tough time recruiting teachers of color to come here. There are about fifteen thousand produced across the United States, and we get about eight every year. And we really should have a higher number, and we need to have teachers that want to stay here. I think we have our own kids trained from the start. I think we have a better chance of keeping them, because otherwise, a lot of them, by the time they hit the third, fourth, fifth year, when they get tenure, if they learn how to actually do their job, then they get whisked away either across the bridge or back to Pennsylvania. And I'd like to keep them here.
One difference too is Sussex Tech is a comprehensive CTE school where they go there and they stay there for all their classes. So one difference that we do is we bus them and we have all the shuttles going everywhere all day. So, you know, there is a philosophical piece of, should it be a comprehensive high school or should it continue to be?
Understood, right.
So, which is a great conversation to begin with.
Could be lively.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You can have it. I was going to give them away.
Take care.
Thanks, sir.
Don, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think I'm back, I think I'm back. Took a while.
You're not missing anything?
Of course.
Dr. John, yes, sir.
It's different on this side.
We're trying to keep you guys busy.
What you do, low down.
We got land acquisition.
We have the, next item on the agenda, we have the presentation on the evaluation of the fire services system. I think it's TriData, is that correct?
Good afternoon.
It's good afternoon.
Not quite sure how they, I don't know if, he has a flash drive. Is it for PowerPoint presentations? I don't think you're going to find, I don't think those sofas is going to have...
Steve's asking for the projector.
Fire protection.
It's not.
You know what, it really does not.
There you go.
He's going to want you to use his laptop.
You need a laptop?
Sure.
Good afternoon. While Dr. Cohen is getting the audiovisual setup, let me just make a background introduction. Dr. Cohen is with TriData LLC. TriData has undertaken over two-hundred-and-fifty studies for local city and county fire departments over the past thirty-three years. In addition to consulting, TriData also has done over fifty after-action reports of major incidents, including the Virginia Tech shootings, Hurricane Isabel, the Anthrax attacks on the Pentagon Mailroom, the Aurora, Colorado theater shooting, and the Boston Marathon bombing. The lead on this proposed analysis is Dr. Harold C. Cohen. He's a senior management for TriData. He has over thirty years of fire experience, service, twenty-two of which with the Maryland Combination County Fire Department where he reached the rank of division chief. He has extensive experience in various facets of fire service, including EMS, fire suppression operations, fire department communication operations, administration and management and training. Dr. Cohen started his fire service career working in volunteer fire companies in Maryland. He's a life member of Pikeville Volunteer Fire Company in Baltimore County, with thirty-five years of service, including floor secretary. He has also served as EMS lieutenant with the Jacksonville, Maryland Volunteer Fire Company. With that, I will turn the program over to Dr. Cohen. I would mention to council that we are also meeting this afternoon with the city council. The mayor and his administration are in full support of this analysis and are willing to share fifty percent of the costs.
And the council, does the council officer approve this agreement? Or is that something that the executive is doing?
This is really informational. We felt that it was important for council to understand what the analysis entails and also for the public to understand funding is available in the executive budgets. So we have the funding to proceed with this. Dr. Cohen?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. President Cannon and members of the council, thank you very much first for allowing TriData to come and present this to you. We feel honored to have Wycomico County allow us to consider us in working with the city of Salisbury to do this evaluation of fire service systems. Just a little bit about TriData for a couple of minutes. Our founder, Phil Shamen, was a former associate administrator of the U.S. Fire Administration and is a Stanford University MBA graduate. We've been doing consulting for thirty-four years and was said two-hundred-and-ten, over two-hundred-and-ten studies, over twenty-five, what we call joint services or combination or shared services types of studies. And we believe we bring with to you some very unique research and measurements when it comes to fire department effectiveness and best practices as we've done on a national and international basis. And we're no strangers to Maryland, besides myself and some others on our staff being from Maryland and lifelong Marylanders. We have done studies in most modern times at several different places as you see right here in front of you, and they were very depths of study. Some comprehensive, some were very, very specific. But these were ones that we've created here. Our, working with the citizens of Wycomico County and the city of Salisbury, I would be serving as the project manager, and we bring with us three consultants. Michael Iacona, who was the fire chief in Tucson, Arizona, and in Orange County, which covers the city of Orlando and Florida, will be with me. He has extensive public administration and years of experience as a fire chief. And I bring this to your attention because he's also a graduate of Salisbury State College. So spent some of his youth here through that. Mr. Robin Davis, having extensive experience, will do our GIS and data analysis for us. And he has extensive experience with us in doing these types of projects for large-size fire departments. And our last person, Mr. Douglas Healthman, who is a CPA, is our financial consultant and will be working with me on some of the financial issues involved with the study. A couple of key aspects that are our understanding of what needs to happen and what should be looked at is first, that understanding that Wycomico County and the city of Salisbury are equal entities in this project, and we can work hard to make sure that from our perspective, that happens. That the county is interested in equitable, fair reimbursement to the city of Salisbury for their services. We understand that Wycomico County wants to have a strong volunteer fire and EMS presence to continue on as part of their rich history, even in those times where a strong volunteer and career presence in fire and EMS are starting to be stressed. The National Volunteer Fire Council would even tell you that over the past thirty years there's been a reduction in volunteer services nationwide of about eight percent per decade. And a couple of decades, and that is very significant. But it doesn't mean that it can't happen and can't continue to be as high quality as it is. And looking for the current and future provisions of high-quality EMS to your citizens. And in fact, going beyond just a city-county agreement and beyond just best practices, all the way to what we call next practices or being ahead of the future, if possible. We've broken this down into three phases. Now, some of the communications that I've received from the city appears to be focused on going with phase one of this agreement. And it's basically, where do things stand? Where do they stand when it comes from a basis of fire and EMS with social aspects, with technological aspects, with education, economics, and political aspects, both within and externally to both the city of Salisbury and the county? We understand that Salisbury does have much of their data, but we also understand that anytime anybody gives you data, it has to be critically looked at, no matter where it's from. And it's an old saying, but it's a true one here, and that is trust but verify. And even those, even sophisticated data will be reviewed for accuracy and making sure it looks to be the best representation of the true picture of fire and EMS. And also a determination of the organizational status of Wycomico County volunteer agencies, both as a whole and also individually. The next step is phase two, which I'll go over quickly whenever the county and the city choose, if they choose to do that. And that's basically talking about the future. Some of that will be in phase one, and phase two would be a significant study. And also looking at the possibilities, consolidation, automatic aid, cooperative agreements, work, doing nothing different than you're doing right now. And each of these themes have variations that we'd like to work with. There's an optional phase three down the road of reaching consensus and implementing whatever agreements are made. And that's working with both of the major agencies to say, "Okay, let's point the wagons west and let everybody move forward." Because it's very easy to write about these things and to give people ideas. It's actually getting them done and getting them done in a timely manner, which makes these studies functional. So that's what I'm going to tell you are the main parts of this. In our proposal, we had the cost for several levels here. Again, these can be done in phases depending on what both parties agree to. And we have no concern either way, in whichever direction that this body sees fit. And, Mr. President, I made this kind of brief because if anybody has any questions, I would really like to let them answer them.
We always appreciate brief, thank you. Especially at two-thirty in the afternoon. Questions from council members? The only question I have, I guess, is what distinguishes your organization from the statistics that are available nationwide as far as fire service and the cost of fire service?
That's a great question. And one of the things that we can tell you about that is, besides, anybody can really get a hold of the statistics, it's interpreting them where the talent comes in. Besides having the proper experience and education, and although I assume consultants are former fire chiefs, putting all of those together allows us to do that. If you were to download all of the National Fire Information Database or all the National EMS Database, it's very raw data. It will not allow you to ask the questions you need to ask, allow you to eliminate those things that are not relevant data, unless you know what that is, unless you understand response intervals and what they really mean, unless you understand what some of the quality assurance models are when it comes to EMS. We can, using these databases, you can measure almost anything. Are you measuring the right things? Downstream, are they going to tell you what is going to happen in the future or what will likely be the future for your organization? And I believe that's where TriData is one step ahead of many of the other organizations. Not only do we know how to get the data and manipulate it and crunch numbers, but also we very much understand the qualitative aspects of data and what it means and how that can be used to implement changes that will, to the best of our ability, do the citizens of Wycomico County what they paid for.
You done?
No, you're good.
You sure? We've got, you know, the situation is different with the city's paid fire department. We have numerous volunteer fire departments in the county. And I'm sure you've been into this for enough, you know, so... this before enough, you know. So the volunteer fire departments have two methods of funding, what they, the money they raise through their volun, through their fundraising efforts and what the county gives them. Do you ever have any resistance from those volunteer fire departments to give you information on their fundraising figures?
Frankly, yes, we do. And it's not just the volunteer service. I could tell you that career services are sometimes, are sometimes just as reserved about getting the data from them. I think the key to this is establishing a communications pattern ahead. That's why we do this on our triage visit. Before we just make a phone call and say, send us your data, if you even have it, we call and explain what we're trying to do and how it's being used. The way we do our studies is that these are, our findings and our final report won't be a surprise. Even if people don't like everything it has to say, we communicate with people ahead of time. If we find a sore point, if we find something that we have trouble accommodating to the rest of the data, if we find something missing, that we contact people who are designated as the people to give information to and get it from. And that really tries to help us out a little bit. We're very upfront with things. We're not all going to agree on everything, but we will give you a data-driven analysis, but also understanding the qualitative and social aspects of the service. And that includes the importance and the history of volunteerism, and we know the county's continued commitment to volunteer services for fire and EMS. Somebody's bound not to like it. Somebody, others won't understand it. And others will, just, I'm sure will come up with ideas that while it may look contrary to their beliefs right now, if followed, has a better chance of assuring volunteer viability, and in fact, a stronger volunteer fire and EMS service. And that's what I can, I can say. Will people be upset? Will people not trust this? Of course. And we do the best we can.
To that point as well, it would be more directed to Wayne rather than you, Dr. Cohen. With the expenditures that we're talking about, because we're looking at at least sixty thousand dollars here, as I understand this.
You're looking at fifteen thousand.
For all the phases.
I mean, I'm talking about the total project cost. You're talking about thirty, you're talking about twenty, and then you're talking about phase three would be five thousand, probably more than that, probably ten. But let's say sixty thousand total, of which we'd have thirty from each. What guarantees in spending that, because I can count the number of studies we've done on ten fingers and ten toes, and not much has come from those studies as far as execution? What guarantees are there that, once the study's done, because he made a very good point, what guarantees are there that the city and the county will come to an agreement and that will say, okay, we've seen what the numbers are, we understand how it's put together, this is what we're going to do?
I can't, I can't really make any guarantee in that regard. I certainly can't speak for the city. But I think what we will have at the end of the first phase, which is what we are entering into here, is, is an objective analysis done by an expert third party. And that's something that we have not had. And I think that if we're going to have a viable discussion, and you know that this has been a bone of contention for a long, long time, I think, I think if we're going to have a reasonable and rational discussion as it relates to the city and the county, the paid service and the volunteer services, you've got to start with what I'd call a rational data set. And more than anything, I believe that that's what we're going to hopefully derive from the study and the discussions that I've had with Dr. Cohen and the folks at Tri-Data. I feel that their experience and their reputation and their expertise is going to render us a good, solid, factual foundation from which way, you know, then we can begin to discuss what sort of an agreement the city and the county would be comfortable entering into. I can't guarantee anything other than I think we'll arrive at a good data set.
Wayne and Mr. Cohen, I guess, I'm pretty sure Salisbury's going to give you their data. They're a paid fire company. They're bringing it on. But we really have no control over our volunteer fire companies. When you call them on the phone and say, look, we're going to come by and pick up this financial information. We want to see the date on, you know, where you're running your calls, how many calls you're running, your fundraising. Do you get into the fundraising part of it any?
We will when we're looking at financial.
So you'll do financials?
Yes, we will.
So they tell you, we're not giving it to you. So what do we do then, Wayne? I mean, I'm hoping that not, that doesn't happen. And, but we're also, at the end of the day, we're going to have to write them a check.
Yeah, I hope that doesn't happen either. But I think one of the things that we will take, take, set aside whether or not the volunteer companies provide us with that financial data, we will have an objective look at the call responses throughout the county by people who analyze this type of data all the time, who also know what the reasonable costs are that are associated with those, with those calls, response times, who's best to respond. And I think, I think from that, we begin to arrive at, okay, well, what is, what is a fair portionment of the cost of providing the public with fire and EMS service? And that's, I really believe that's, I'm hoping that that's where we land, where everybody involved in fire service and EMS has some confidence that we've arrived at a really good data set so that we can then enter the next phase of the discussion. To Dr. Cohen's point, how do we make it viable in the long term? Because that's, that's critical for our citizens. We have to find the way to make fire service and EMS service in this county viable in the long term, even in the medium range terms. So it's, it's, you said it best, you know, it's trust but verify. So we're starting with, again, a data analysis that is being done by a company that has a lot of expertise, has no axe to grind, and, and we're hopeful that that will render a good, objective data set that then forms the foundation for further discussion.
And I'm glad to see you here today because I know in initial discussions, at the very outset, it was proposed that this, some sort of, a summer study be done by a local accounting firm. And I immediately said, that is absolutely the wrong direction to go. You have somebody, have to have somebody that's familiar with the, the actual profession, and, and you do fit the bill perfectly. Again, though, my concern, you know, we've had, we've had discussions and we've had studies done on, on the, geez, I draw a blank. In reference to the city and the county.
Tax differential.
Tax differential. Thanks. It's twice today. I appreciate it. You have to say very close to me.
BMTs.
The tax differential. And perfectly well done. The company that did it was, you know, very highly qualified, and yet the report was just pushed aside. Well?
I think one of the things that we, with our experience, that we offer with this is that because we have a great deal of technical experience and professional experience in fire, EMS, communications, that we're going to be able to not, not only give you the numbers, but explain to them what they mean and what they, but also what the future holds. And what, not so much what happens if you follow it, but frankly, what happens if you don't. And I can tell you that while some of the technology is making some of the things very simple, what it's going to come down to in the next few years is in the communication center, there's going to be a Big Mac, and you can, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen can say, where's my house? And they'll see their house at all of the fire and EMS stations. And it would be very difficult to explain why the closest one isn't coming to my house. The complexities come in into how do we apportion, how do we value the system, how do we value the service, where while lines may become blurred for good reasons or even maybe not so good reasons, the hard part is coming up with a formula to figure out, okay, we're going to respond to the citizens, and we're going to do the right thing. But we're also going to have to say those things that are controlled by city finances and those by county finances. I think the citizens are going to look to us and say, you all figure it out. I just want, that map says that ambulance is close, and that fire engine is, and that's the one I want. You all figure it out. And there are models to do that. And that's what I think we will be able to help you.
Yeah, I, I mean.
That's not the issue, though. We're not having trouble following logistics, I think. We're not having, I don't think we're having a problem with the logistics of fire service delivery. Our issue here is the cost associated with city versus county.
I'm not, I'm not sure I would.
Which may cause some threats.
I'm not sure I would agree with that, John. In, in, in the discussions, and we've had a lot of discussions with all the various fire companies, there, there are differences of opinion as to, as to responses, the need for responses, the type of equipment that should be located at each one of the stations. I mean, it, it's not, to us, it may seem cut and dry, but it isn't cut and dry. And I think Larry can speak that is probably better than anybody at this table right now. We, we're, the, the decisions that would be made with regard to how we would respond to the information that's derived from the study are really in the hands of the two respective elected councils and the two respective executives. The, the, you know, the data and the analysis is presented. Those, those decisions are then made by those folks who were elected to make those decisions.
Well, if it comes to the council, if it comes to the council. We have a report out there right now that never came to the council. I'm not implying fault. I'm just saying that that's a reality.
That report wasn't paid for.
Understood. I understand that. That wasn't a council decision.
That, that, that report, uh, did, well, that, well, no. You know, once the statement's out there, you can't take it back. You have to respond. You know, that, you know, that report, that report did not deliver what was incorporated into the engagement letter.
No, but my point is, you're saying that that decision would be made by both bodies, or four bodies of government, councils and executive branches, not necessarily so. And this last report that, that came out, the decision that's unilaterally made that the report wasn't sufficient enough to the council, therefore avoiding making that payment. I can, I can appreciate that, but I'm just trying to set it clear as to where, where the buck may stop. Literally.
Doesn't stop with me.
The only other question I have is, what item, where is this? Is this, I'm assuming, under contracts as far as you say it's in the executive budget? What exact category?
We, we have, we have savings in, in a number of lines in the executive budget that we use to pay for this report rather than requesting a transfer out of contingency.
And is there an end to it? I guess, as far as trying to regulate costs, how much do you, could we might anticipate that phase three is going to involve?
I, I don't thi, I think within the context of this fiscal year, John, I think we're looking at, at phase one. I think by the time phase one is done, by the time phase one is, is discussed, I think a follow-up to phase two or phase three would likely fall into the next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. I don't anticipate it happening that quickly.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm at the, the long-term commitment. What is the real, what do you anticipate, the real commitment dollars?
All we're committing to is phase one.
Excuse me?
All we're committing to is phase one. Phase two and three are optional.
You know, when you look at your three phases, we're, I don't think at this point in time, there's any complaints from anybody in the county about the service they're getting. You know, as far as citizens go, most of them are getting, they were under a fear when the previous mayor was threatening to cut the service off. But I think everybody thinks they're getting good service. I just think that the issue now is that the city's not getting reimbursed for the amount that, or that was the issue that came up. I don't guess it'll reverse, and the city owes us money, probably wouldn't be that lucky. But, but, you know, as far as.
Can watch out.
As far as what our future organization, you know, consolidation, the cooperative, well, cooperative agreement would be in phase two. But I don't hear any complaints about any of the, any of the fire services not being able to do their job now. I mean, everybody seems to be happy with their job.
No, I agree with that. I think the fire and EMS services do a terrific job. The, the two questions that consistently come up, number one is cost sharing. And number two is, there's a fair amount of discussion about, about who responds.
Right.
Yeah, the dis, the conversations I've heard, complaints I've heard aren't from citizens. They're from firefighters.
Right, right.
And that's already another people's territory.
And I can't speak to that. I, you know.
I just want to make sure I address your concerns. I don't think I got to do it completely. We've talked about accessing financial data. It's not that I'm not concerned about it, but overwhelmingly throughout the country, when it comes to volunteer services, the problems, although on the surface, you might not think it, the problems tend to not be financial. It's human capital that is doing the volunteer services in right now. And those are the real answers we have to find. Of course, we will look, and I may be surprised, but some of the volunteer services that I've dealt with, they do as well, if not better, than the career services.
Oh, yeah. I'm not questioned, I'm not questioning their integrity or anything like that, but sometimes they like to keep things close to their vest, and I don't blame them. Has this been run by our volunteer departments? Are they happy that we're going in this direction? Has there been any, been any input to them or from them?
I've spoken to many of the volunteer fire companies. I told them what we were doing. We just need to get, I don't anticipate going past phase one, in all honesty. I hope Jake and I can sit down and get all this worked out. But they're all in favor of finding out what the true cost is and somebody that knows how to, to measure that.
So there'll be a level of cooperation, so.
There'll be a level of cooperation.
Sure. And it's more the value of what the cost is, not what their fundraising abilities are, but what their actual cost of, of running those pieces of equipment and personnel are.
In addition, section 305D of the charter requires, or I'm sorry, 305E of the charter requires that all records and files pertaining to the receipt and expenditure of county funds by all officers, agents, and employees of the county shall be available to the internal auditor. So, I mean, they should have to provide it.
Again, as I thought more, John, the, again, I keep coming back to a really good data set because whether or not this leads to a fire service agreement that's acceptable to both the city and the county and the volunteer companies, whatever decisions we have to make going forward with respond, with, with, with regard to what our fire service and what our EMS service countywide looks like in the future, there's got to be a foundation of good factual analysis. So I, I think there's a lot of value in that because it gives us, it should give us the information that we need in order to make good decisions going forward. So it, it's, you know, I, I can't emphasize enough, I've been involved in these discussions now for four years, and, and the overriding requirement, I believe, we need is a good third-party objective analysis that everyone trusts and has confidence in. third-party, objective analysis that everyone trusts and has confidence in. And that's what I hope will derive from this.
Do a consensus or support, I mean, or nothing, or?
We could certainly do that, Council.
I'm fine.
You're good?
Fine.
It's all yours, Dylan?
Thank you.
We appreciate you bringing it forward and putting it on the.
It's a matter that needs to be resolved sooner than later, really. It's going on too long. Other things to talk about.
It's in your hands, Dr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Land acquisition, right? Where do we start?
Try yourself.
You all have been sitting back there all day. It's warm back there, isn't it?
It's open, thank you, we changed that. We're going to have to serve popcorn in the back rows or something.
Okay, just make sure you have a mic when we're speaking, it's really a problem we just have to deal with, with some of the.
There you go.
We're going to let you start wherever you want. Burn it up.
Where's your question?
I'm sure we're all in a room familiar with the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex. The area we were considering in the previous iterations, I've got a couple of these larger scales if you'd like.
Just by the way, we, we, we have done, we've done the meet and bound survey, so what you're looking at in terms of the outlined land area has been verified. This is what we would be purchasing if we proceed ahead.
Yeah, so we, we've run the boundary survey, and we've done a, a pseudo-topo survey to identify the highs and lows of the buildable acreage of the property. But in effort to orient you to, to what we're looking at, if, if my border is at the bottom, you see our existing Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex in black.
Sorry, this is the bar.
Yes, kind of off to the left. The city property that we were discussing some time ago is around and to the left, kind of cut off the page. The property that we are, are interested in discussing today is the, we refer to it as the guy property. It's just over 20 acres of land. It sits off to the right as you're looking at the property. Paleo chain, Paleo Lane kind of splits the two properties in half. It is a, a, a public street that runs through there. The property consists of predominantly woods. There is a, I'm guessing it's an old borrow pit or a gully. I can't find much of a drainage pattern through there. That sits off towards the railroad tracks or to the right as you're looking at the plan.
Larry, are you following okay? You guys got it all straight there? Okay.
All right, so the, the current proposal now is to, I, I think we'll turn it over to Park Street Rec when we talk about the needs of the county and the fields of eight and all of that, good stuff, but to propose three full-size regulation baseball fields that, when the need dictates, we can convert to softball, baseball, kind of a dual utilization. But the baseball fields are official baseball diamonds, the, the materials of the diamonds, we're kind of working out those details, but basically what we're looking at is two full baseball diamonds on the guy property with the potential of a possible third down in where I say area of lower but generally level ground off to the right of the, closer to the railroad tracks.
Where's that wet area?
Yeah, I need, my wetlands guy is going in there and looking at it. See, basically what we have is, is where the, I, I'm, I'm sure when you go down Nellie Mill Road, you see the stone parking lot. Our property is right behind that. So the area behind that, closest to the existing ball fields, is a very high area. Then it drops off to a ridge, then it's a level spot, then it drops off again to the ridge area, to the wet area. So in that middle ridge area, I feel confident that we can use that for something, but I need to get the wetlands guy in and look at it. But for the intents of this discussion, we're looking at two full-size regulation baseball fields on the guy property.
If Rock, if it turns out not to be suitable for, suitable for a field, that lower area wouldn't be suitable for parking.
Yes. Yes, that's our overall plan.
And what this does for us is, it, it gives us a field array now where we would have eight fields for a softball tournament, but we would have four fields for a baseball tournament, which really opens up, opens up a new market for tournaments. And in speaking, in speaking with Andy Wisk at UTRIP and with Bill McDowell at UTRIP, there is a real market for, for high-quality regulation baseball fields for tournament activity. So it, it, it's a little bit of a shift from our original thinking, but we make, we think it makes, I think it makes a lot of sense.
So what's the total cost of this project now, as it's, as it sits now with the two baseball fields, $2 million? Something like that?
I, I believe the number we have is, we have $1 million from the state with no match. We have $450,000 from tourism, and about $1 million from the county. So we have about $2.5 million. We are looking at.
Two baseball fields.
It's, it's less fields that we're looking at putting in, but we are looking at doing an artificial surface to make them convertible between only infield, artificial surface on the infield of the baseball diamonds so that they will attract both baseball and softball events.
So that, that was one of my questions. You can put artificial turf down on the infield? What does Shorebird have? That's turf, isn't it?
No.
They have a natural infield.
But the outfield is?
Yeah, they have a traditional baseball field.
Okay. So in a softball tournament, which they, they require their infield, you can roll that up?
They can play either game.
No, they can play with it on, on the artificial surface.
Yeah, I, I thought they wanted dirt.
They, they, both base, what, who we've talked with says both baseball and softball will play on artificial.
Yeah.
The other won't play on the other style, so like, one won't play on dirt, the other won't play on grass, but they'll both play on artificial.
Okay.
So having the artificial on the baseball diamonds makes them playable for both types of, of groups versus making them just traditional baseball or traditional softball really makes it a harder sell for the other groups.
So, so what's the $200,000 on the CIP for then? Isn't that what's in the CIP? I thought that, I thought that's, there's a question, the CIP.
The $200,000 in the CIP, which we may or may not need, Mark, is for the acquisition and the engineering of the guy property. Because we had originally, recall that we had originally been operating under the assumption that the city would donate the land, and when they pulled back from that, in order to proceed ahead, we've got to acquire land.
So the money Pam's talking about is for the?
It's for the actual development.
Everything else, and the two, the CIP money's for the.
Right. Now, what we'll have to do is, is now determine, as we do for, for their engineering, now determine really what the, the total development cost is going to be, and I don't have that number for you today.
What's the proposed property line in the back there? Do we have fields on someone else's property?
We have two fields on the, on city property, and we've had discussions, Executive Culver has had discussions with Mayor Day about securing long-term use of those two existing soccer fields, or rectangular fields.
No trees on there?
No.
Trees, no dinosaurs.
Again, with the expansion, I guess Steve, maybe you need to address it.
John?
Excuse me? Oh. On here? Okay. Sorry about that. The, the economic impact of this, again, just to refresh the public as far as this investment, as far as what we're looking at.
Yeah, when you're looking at the economic impact of tourism in the county, it's about 48 million. About two-thirds of that is a result of the existing Parker, and we feel like over the next three years, if we were to build out like this, as Pam mentioned, and Wayne mentioned, the opportunity to grow and to bring in new business, we really feel like is strong in baseball. And we feel like over the next three years, we've projected with the folks we've talked to with national baseball tournaments and existing softball events, we can grow that from 48 million to over 60 over the next three years. So the opportunity's there, you know, I think, I think it's important that we retain what we have, that's obviously critical, but we really feel like there's opportunity to grow. And you won't find any, you know, you've got Sports at the Beach in Georgetown that have a lot of baseball fields, but there's, there's nowhere in this area that would have four big diamonds like this. So we would be, you know, strategically a hub for that type of activity for new events, which is, of course, what we're wanting to do.
What, who would come? Who, who does that?
As far as baseball events?
Yeah, you know, like we have the, you, you, the Triple S.
Yeah.
The Triple S A that does the softball. What kind of organization does the baseball?
There's different ones. We've actually, last year, we started with an organization called Dynamic Baseball, and they ran two small tournaments, but, but part of the pitch was, over the next two years, to grow a base so that they can grow into a facility like this. So they're very intrigued. In fact, they added a third event for this coming summer. There's an organization called Athletics Baseball that, that's very interested. They run national tournaments that are basically like our World Series, six days, and the nice thing with those events is they run Friday to Thursday, and they require the teams to stay, to stay six nights. So, and a lot, most of that would be weekday activity, which of course would be huge for us. So there's different organizations out there that do this type of activity, but again, baseball is where we feel like we've got a lot of opportunity to grow.
In the newspaper, it said a couple different times that the UTRSA was willing to sign a multi-year contract if we did this. Is that true or not? I mean, it said, it said county officials said, that's what the newspaper said, and I've contacted the reporter, she hasn't gotten back to me. But, um, do you have any, okay. I mean, there's no, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee. What they, what they typically do is we sign a one-year agreement, and then they commit to coming back in some form for a second year, but we don't know until that year which age groups will get how many teams, but there's no multi-year commitment.
Is there any value in the timber that'll have to be clear cut from these diamonds?
We're not sure of that yet.
It'll light.
I understand there's an owl over there.
Bats.
Four baseball-sized large diamonds and four smaller diamonds, 375-foot fences on four, and the other ones are?
The, the baseball diamonds themselves are 375, and the softballs are 300. There's details at the.
Dimension, yeah. I'm sorry, 375 for the baseball.
Yes, and 300 for the softball.
300.
Any other questions?
I support it.
Anybody have any objections in particular to?
No, nothing new.
We're not voting on it right now.
Get a feel.
We appreciate the briefing, though. That's, thank you for coming in.
Very well.
The intent was to let us know that it could be done, correct?
Yes, sir. The feasibility, we, I believe our option agreement expires in the middle of February, so we'll, we'll proceed ahead. We have to do a Phase One, which, environmental study, which can be done pretty quickly, but we didn't want to proceed with further costs if there was a majority objection.
I think there's a majority objection.
No.
Yeah, only, the only concern I have is if we're going to focus more on baseball coming in, and we're going to have a shortage of baseball fields, these smaller diamonds aren't big enough for baseball fields.
We have a shortage of baseball fields now. That's what we're trying to address.
And we're going to use.
We only have one.
Will you use shorter players, so we use age groups so they'll have shared fences?
You, I mean, you could, if, if you had a big baseball tournament like our World Series with multiple age groups, the younger ones could play on the 300-foot fence and get portable mounds, and you could do that. But the goal would be to try to attract those that would use the bigger diamonds, but you could use both.
Steve, I appreciate you looking into the baseball resource because that's something that's untapped here locally. I mean, there are tournaments all around, but I think Wycomico County can manage it in a decent way, that we can continue to bring them back.
Thank you for having an opening. Appreciate it, Sam.
I'm taking motion to adjourn.
Remember about this?